How about the following nations? Can you throw out that?
I would introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few meetings so that we have to prove the minutes of July 12. We have a motion to approve the July 12 minutes. Remove as written.
All in favor?
All in favor. Sorry. We're going to give you the gavel.
You'd never know what I do with it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 13.
Second. All in favor? Another motion, Tony, you want to go there?
Make a motion to approve the minutes on July 18.
Second. All in favor? Old business, website agendas and minutes. We didn't vote on this to remove the agenda. Once the agenda is put on for the week and it's done and the meeting happens, then we are thinking that we just need the ongoing agenda for the meeting that's upcoming. And that the official minutes, it was brought up in the last meeting, that the official minutes were consolidated into something that wasn't everything that happened. And it was confusing for the public to read the consolidated minutes. So I'm suggesting that we don't put the minutes unless they're the actual true minutes on the website and it's very time consuming to do. And there is a book which is an official record of the minutes that's kept in the vault. And if people want to read the minutes. And that's why we have the video. Because you can review the entire video in its entirety and it wouldn't be based on. If somebody else's interpretation.
Makes sense.
So I'm suggesting that we only put the agenda onto the upcoming meeting and not the minutes. And if they want to review the meeting, they can look at it.
I'll make a motion for that. And also that they put on the agenda, we fill in at the most, at a time.
Expedition.
Not expedition, when it's available.
Oh.
When the agenda is completed. So it might not be until Wednesday at noon time.
Yeah.
So when I have the time to, and you have the time to put it together.
I think he's trying to get them up by Monday, but things do happen. And if we do that and we post the agenda on Monday, then you're not going to get any of these last minute people that come in on Tuesday and they want to get on the agenda. It won't happen or have to wait till the next time. Because once it's put on the website, I don't really think we can change it.
Really shouldn't.
No, so. Second, I'm not.
Second.
All in favor? We need a motion to sign warrants, please.
So moved.
All in favor? You got a second?
Yes.
We don't have a picture of the right.
And there's only four lines to sign this, what's coming up. But you can squeeze in a bit more. Okay. So we have to agree to accept the money for the LRAP, which is the money that we get from the state to pave the road. We don't have it bigger yet, but it's been anywhere from thirty seven to forty one thousand.
This is what was received last year.
What was received last year was thirty seven, two hundred and eighty four. So we need a motion to agree to accept the money.
So moved.
You got it, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I guess I'll put the date there, then.
No.
When she gets it.
The next on the agenda is parking on Church Street by the Peacock House. And so we have a letter from. Concerned taxpayer. I'm not going to get any of it.
There's a matter of concern about the cars parking on Church Street just behind the town office building. If you come up Summer Street to make a right onto Church, sometimes it is very hard to get by. What if there's an emergency vehicle that, to go up or down Church? It may cause an accident. And they wish that I, and this is addressed to me. What if they wanted us to address this matter? So what I did.
So are they saying that the excessive parking at the Peacock House? Or what, I understand.
It is, and it's always been an issue. But the point this letter makes is when you're coming out of Summer Street and to make a right turn onto Church, it could be hard, it's hard to see or to get by coming out of Summer onto Church, coming up the hill. So I called the owner of the Peacock House, Mary Beth, and we had a very nice conversation just to do some troubleshooting with her. I'm sure she's already thought of this, this issue.
So this is an issue in the summer that was involved in the winter? Of course, in the winter, we have snow and other things.
We have no parking day on the street.
And coming from, I've worked fifteen years here on the ambulance. And so when the nursing home was open, this is the route that we would take to get to the nursing home was right down. I mean, the ambulances got by. We never, we never once had to not go around.
Last week, there was, people parked on the right and the left.
Due to work, I believe, going on here at Bump's place.
And that, I felt, was a little bit problematic.
So some of the troubleshooting that we came up with, Mary Beth and I on the phone, is, and this is why I put it on the agenda, is to have our public works crew paint lines close to the intersection so not to have any parking directly on the corner. They could park further up towards their own private driveway here.
To facilitate the turn.
I mean, it's not going to solve every problem, but it's a quick little band-aid that we can put on now and it might help some.
Now, parking on both sides of the street is not legal, right?
We don't have a no parking ordinance in Quebec at all. The only thing we do come up with in the wintertime is a no parking ban. Want to know the truth, we really couldn't even enforce that. We don't have a local police department and we don't have an ordinance. It's a request that we do and people honor it on a good faith for the greater cause.
Realistically though, on a street like Church and Summer, whatever, that's a narrow street.
It is.
And parking on both sides.
I would have to say parking on one side of the street would make sense.
And I spoke with Jim Clark, our code enforcement officer, about this whole thing, said I had some backing and some teeth in this discussion. And he says, you really, you can park on any street you want in Quebec. It's like a town road. So we're just trying to fix the issue of emergency vehicles and such. Mike, and then you on this.
The comment I wanted to make was to point out what you pointed out, that there was some painting or construction work going on there and the contractors were parking on the other side. So there was a bottleneck there. I know last week, a couple times, I had to come up and was like, oh boy, this is tight.
I've been driving along there for a couple of years now. I have an F-250 truck, they're fairly large, kind of bigger than the average car. I never have a problem getting through there other than the fact that the bushes on the other side are out into the road.
On the right going, going down to Washington?
Yeah, they're out in the road. And those need to be trimmed back. Those are trimmed back, it's not a parking problem. Who knows?
Who's bushes?
You have plenty of room to get through.
Are these private persons' bushes?
The church, I think.
Are the church bushes?
Right by the telephone pole there.
I believe we would have them in a domain in order for, you know, we would have room to.
That's in our way of, probably, yeah. Mary Beth?
I just would like to have clarified, is there something different about the way people are parking on Church Street other than the few times where it was the workmen, like Jim Bump's? Has something changed that makes it more of an issue now?
I think it was the minor construction and I think, not even really a band-aid, but to put up certain footage on that corner, it just makes sense. So an ambulance, fire truck, or even a large vehicle has to make that right coming out of Summer or coming down, making a left. It just makes sense to just gray off or orange off a little area there for that turn.
I don't believe logically thinking that they would come up, they would be returning to the station at that point.
Yeah.
So they, they know it's such a tight, they avoid that. They would avoid that. They would even go down and go up Pleasant. You live right there, so what's your opinion?
Thanks. Two quick comments, three quick comments on this. Personally, I'm a little troubled by a letter unsigned, an anonymous letter, concerns citizen letter. Even if the intent of it is good, it puts us all in a box sitting here on beautiful Wednesday night and the person that this claim out there is nowhere to be seen. When you do an anonymous letter, it means I don't want to be involved. Yet this person involved all of us. We have no idea what interest this person has and what credibility this person has. I came prepared to suggest.
And it also eliminates the possibility of a one-on-one way of facilitating a solution.
Precisely. And the solution that may have been worked out already seems like a reasonable one. Do you know who the person is who submitted the letter? Okay, so you can't.
But I could correct their grammar. Being an uptight creature, I would love to do that.
I know that a little bit of a complaint should be addressed.
I'm sorry, grammar, you made it in a row.
I was just going to say, your point was well taken. I'm not sure we should be addressing a complaint that was signed by a citizen.
It was due to the emergency vehicle.
Let me follow on that because here's, here's what I think. I think that there is no problem to be solved here. I live right on the corner, you may have passed out that graphic. Yeah, just to show Church Street and the lighter green parcel at the top, but obviously it's the building that we're in now. And the long narrow yellow one is the Peacock House property. Just, that's just for orientation, just for physical orientation. So I'm sitting right on the corner of Summer and Church Street. And literally, I have the best view of traffic up and down Church Street. And in the eighteen years that I've owned that house, I have never seen a vehicle block on that street going up or back. You know, sometimes you have to give a little ground. Like Michael says, there's, you know, sometimes it's a little bit of a tight squeeze. It was a one-time event with a painter at Jim Bump's house with his blue pickup in front. Bump has parking off of Hamilton Street, just like this property does, just like the Church does. So typically, it's tight and cutting back vegetation's going to help a little bit on the visuals. But the street is not blocked. We know that this letter is not from the fire department or the rescue squad. If there were a problem on that street, they are the appropriate and credible people to raise this problem. And it has never been raised publicly, even though there's been, uh, this city street, whatever you do. It doesn't impede the actions of either of those parties to simply go around the block, even if that street, it would not impede their mission at least. So better to hear from them if there's a problem than from some person whose speculations and opinions are unbalanced. I would note also that any solution you come by, and it sounds like you've followed this already, Peacock House, which is one of our best draws in Quebec, they provide a tremendous service and their guests provide revenue for a lot of business in town. Any solution, moving it back, like maybe from the corner and marking it or whatever, any solution should not, should be very considered to Peacock House's business, sorry. So it doesn't constrain them and force their guests to park up here in your parking lot and walk down the hill.
Oh, Marilyn?
There was a town, way back, if a letter was sent to the town administrator with a complaint, it wasn't accepted unless they were signed. And you can look that up in the dictionary because that was great. I thought that was a good idea.
I just go with the other thing on that issue. I believe, even though we get an anonymous complaint, what substantiate independently, in this case by Mike Salati, who saw the congestion, then we should move forward and try to prevent something from happening again. And by creating a situation where you're avoiding parking X number of feet from the corner, you're going to presumably resolve that situation in the future.
And I need permission from the board to do that. I felt like I couldn't just ask our public works department.
Well, I was going to ask you, in your experience, have it ever impaired when you were operating the ambulance, an emergency vehicle? And you said it didn't.
It might be as a mirror too, but we're probably going to fly through.
This is a unique situation, it might be a one-time, a two-time. But complaint is a complaint. Somebody here substantiated that complaint. If I was coming down the street, I would be the one saying, yeah, you're right, I saw that that day. And that justifies moving forward and doing something about it.
But why not sign your complaint?
You know how many times you get, you get anonymous complaints over the years?
But I appreciate everybody that came here. This is how it's supposed to be done. You problem solve, you work together, and you come up with a solution.
I think the nice result is, is if we do put a little yellow line per couple of feet, just as a courtesy to say that watch the corner, I think we've also shown, I can still park on the corner one way.
So we need a motion to get a few, few feet on either side of the corner?
I would say fifteen feet from the corner.
How much?
No.
What is the reservation?
Just going to take away her parking.
All right, well, you know, I'm trying to make a sense. But state law.
Well, you also have to realize that the Peacock House has guests. Some of them may have issues with walking to the door. So you don't want to take away the closest parking spaces.
She probably is maybe at a disabled spot in front of her.
It's a very good point because that Church Street entrance to the building leads to a suite that is the only ten-track accessible suite. And so a lot of the older folks tend to want first-floor accommodations. There's two suites in. And so those are the folks that tend to park there. And other folks do too, because there's only two spots in front of that at the end. And then there's one single-way driveway between the Peacock House property and the Dean's property. So that takes care of three cars out of seven, because it's a seven-hour end. So we really need to have space for four cars on the Church Street side. And a lot of folks are disabled in the morning, the first year, or have mobility limitations. Parking on Church Street is essential for the economy.
Could you, could you make that a handicap area right there? Do you have a sign?
No, I don't. And I don't want, I know of handicapped signs. They also need to have handicapped placards. And so if people have mobility limitations and don't have a handicap placard.
Would you want one, one spot handicapped?
To be honest, I would, well, to be honest, I would probably want two, one for each of the two suites down there.
But then they would be empty if nobody rented that week of a handicap. And it would be able to be parked. Maybe one, one would.
Great, great, because these folks might not have placards. And that would be a big limitation.
And maybe marking, how about a four parking spot lines? Would you line?
I could do that.
Lines for four people and then they know that's what you can fit four people.
But it is important that four cars.
Thank you, Mary Beth. If I make a motion that we, we didn't get the footage, I'd say if you actually had the parking delineated and it was far enough back from the.
Corner.
You wouldn't really have to put all these other lines on the corner.
If you took orange, maybe two feet from the corner.
How much?
Three feet.
Yeah, three feet.
That's going to give you view enough around that corner.
You'll be able to tell when you go over there just how many feet you may be.
And then have the public parks cut back those rose bushes. Sit up to the Catholic turn. Yes. I think that would solve.
So that you could drive by them.
Right, yes.
And we do four spots.
Yeah, three feet from the corner. And then cut the rose bushes back. Good thing.
I'll make that motion. Second. All in favor?
Does that include painting for parking lines?
I think four parking lines.
Three feet. A full line.
I think it might be orange. I think it's five lines to make four.
Four to four.
It takes five lines to make four parks.
I don't think all the bushes are on the church property. I think there's only one roof. On the church property, and I'm coming forward, I think it's on the people that own the yellow home. I think they have bushes that are coming out into the road too.
It's all on that right side of the way down.
Well, I take it, it's. We have to find how many rods, the width of the road is.
They're all embedded in the telephone. They're all embedded in the telephone.
So that they're a visual.
We are allowed to run anything in our right way.
Well, they're not only a visual, but they drive through there and.
They scratch your car.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the bottom line.
Well, you're not encouraged to go through the rose bushes to avoid the.
That'd be an improvement on mine.
Well, they are an invasive species and you can't get rid of them.
Okay, next, I'll need, thank you all for coming and voicing your views on how we can solve this problem. I think that's really great. And I just will thank the anonymous complainer for getting us all together. Sign the complaints next time, really, would be better. And then you should come and defend your argument. Okay, so we have, what do we have here, Ray's Clinic? August nineteenth, from nine to eleven?
Here.
Oh, from here. How much does it cost for, it's just for dogs or?
Not for people.
No, but for cats or just dogs?
I think it's for either.
Dogs that have to be.
They have to have it.
Registered, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Wait, hold on. Also, our animal control officer, Rhonda Welcome, and her husband Chuck had doggy bag waste dispensers made and distributed all around town. There's like six or seven. There's even going to be a mobile one that they'll move around.
They're really neat, they're really neat.
What do you mean a mobile one, like in a cart or a?
Its permanent location is yet to be determined. But I really wanted to thank her for going above and beyond and making that happen.
Is it being placed down by the Dewey Mallory that the truck?
But did you see what that is? They're putting the bags in the porta potty. And that's not good because they're not going to accept it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Rhonda is also checking, I know at another meeting we were talking about putting a trash can down there. She's going to talk to Nikos Tarrish or, is that who it is? So I fed her on that.
So, okay, could we just talk about that mobile hooper, whatever it is? I just, I'm trying to get a visual.
They haven't decided on where it's going to go. So they're going to try it out in different locations and then decide.
Is it going to be like that ice cream truck with the little dingaling?
It's going to be where you step in it and move it through there.
Women needs, do you think that?
So this is brought up when I was claim warden. Of course, we own the community bulletin board and a lot of people were nice about it. I've been digging clams down on Sandbar. And every single day, there are people down there walking their dogs. And they're not just walking their dogs along the top of the beach, they're walking out on the sandbar and dogs are pooping. And one group, football-sized field, conundrum to clam flats.
Is that true?
Yes, that's true.
That is not, I don't think that's commonly known.
Peacock Hall floor.
Yeah.
So you have a whole population of people that are dependent on using those beaches. And while they're beautiful, and people love to take their dogs for a walk, this is serious.
So yet another reason to use these bags.
It's a state law.
State law, it's a state law.
There needs to be information of that.
So there needs to be a sign, it's got to be, someone's got to make a sign, even if the town, and I'll put the state in, I don't care, that says, do not walk your dogs out on that clam flat. And if your dogs have an accident on the beach.
Pick it up like anywhere else.
Pick it up, or you are polluting the flats or something, however it would like to be.
I agree.
But I'm glad you brought it up.
That's very important.
It's really important and it should be a memory too.
I just found that out from tidily today, but that's the length of one dog.
Oh, no, Ashley, on who's next?
Go ahead.
Signs on the little boxes, to me, that it was a little bit confusing because it says four dogs, pooping only, okay? So you would have to open that box to find out that there are bags in there instead of a place to deposit.
Right. Oh, right. That is confusing.
That is, true.
Good point.
You have the town ordinance regarding picking up after your dog. You have a state ruling regarding when you're with your dog on the clam flats. And it's all about picking up the dog's waste. So if you're going to have state signs, if you're going to have the state tag on our ordinance.
Yes, absolutely. We definitely need a couple.
It's education, people have to know, yeah, we love it when you bring your dog here, but just pick up after your dog.
So you want to know the best access to the clam flats? We can put these signs, I think it needs to be where.
Could I ask a political question?
I'm not sure.
Don't hesitate.
Is it a finable offense?
Yes, I think so.
Then there you go.
Don't worry too much.
Not in town.
Who is doing that, our clam warden?
Our clam warden?
Possibly so, yes, it was on the clam flats.
You know, I don't even know, but maybe the state could enforce it too. I don't know. Well, especially if you're endangering.
But you really are endangering. And I'm not seeing a couple of dogs.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm seeing a steady stream the whole time along that beach.
Well, this is why Loco has been closed for pollution. And we believe, we think that's the reason.
I think that's, yeah. And I'm glad you brought it up because I didn't know about it.
The state surplus property, what is that? What surplus property is on, I don't know that.
So in the state of Maine, in Augusta, there is a place called State Surplus Property. Any place that, any state organization that doesn't want, and I'm going to use like binder, office materials, things like that, will go to this place and municipalities can take of it, cheap. Instead of going on a website and buying office supplies or whatever, computers, we could use this facility. But we have to have permission in order to do that. This is not a green light to go buy stuff. This is green lights for us if the opportunity arises.
Is there a website that was available?
I'm not sure. This is something that Suzette found. I know that we go to Augusta a lot for training. We could go and look and see if this is something we need. We can go get it cheaper than what we get brand new.
Have you, like, heavy duty equipment?
A way to save some money.
Heavy duty equipment?
Possibly, I'm not sure. We can also donate to this. We need right here just the signature of a board official. What's this?
That's to donate, if we want to donate anything. It's representative.
The only place you're signing this on.
So it's next.
A motion to authorize for an aide to sign this?
Yes. Send a board official.
It says chief administrator too. Executive head, governing board official, who's going to give it to you.
So who made the motion?
I agree.
All in favor?
Send it.
There you go. Supplemental sewer commitment.
Suzette, Suzette found that.
Kudos to Suzette.
Okay, so what are we on now?
Appointment to supplemental sewer.
What was our designation from the board of orals?
Oh, yeah, because I didn't have, I didn't have, oh, it's an email. We're sadly accepting Mike Calani's resignation from the Board of Appeals, because he's been put on the planning board, and we believe you can't be on both. You can't make a decision on the planning board and then make another decision on the same decision on the Board of Appeals. So, thank you for putting that up, and we'll glad you're on the planning board. Motion to accept Mike's resignation, second, all in favor? Supplemental sewer commitment?
There was an omission in the sewer commitment, and for the last quarter. So, we found them, and we had to build the ones that didn't get built. And this is a handful, it's like seven or eight. Yeah. This is given, have permission to do that.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the speculative commitment of sewer rates that were omitted. Appointment to recycling committee.
Who wants to be on the committee?
Need a motion to appoint Larry Lebec to the recycling committee.
So moved.
We're at the point of other business.
I have other business.
There you go.
Apparently. I have a tax abatement form from tax collector Suzette. It's for real estate account number eighteen forty-two, and the amount of twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents. And the reason is for billing computer error. So, we need a motion, do you have any other tax abatement? No. Motion to sign this tax abatement form.
So moved. All in favor?
Who seconded that?
Joanne McCray.
And one other is an announcement, this is just an announcement about the town election that's coming up, August eighth. We have to announce the following, clerks will be working the town election from eight to six. Ann Seavey, the Democrat, Ann Seavey, Republican, Katie Brimar, Democrat, Gwen Clover, Republican, Peggy Bailey. And the warden is Sherry Pike. For our town meeting, the annual town business meeting, August ninth, the election clerks will be Ann Seavey and Katie Brimar, and the moderator is Harold Bailey. We have it in a note that we're supposed to announce that in the select, so that's, you go. I think we need to announce their political party.
We're supposed to have one from each party.
It has to be fair, right.
You have to have one from each party, so.
Thank God.
And then, yeah, that's it, that's all I have to tell you.
Yes, I did. Inquiry on, of course, is that barn that burned on the pump station row? Where they followed, they were from the fire marshal's determination, and those, I would say it's a dangerous building. And they moved on that, and.
And what we have to, something else?
Whatever we're going to put on the next agenda.
I'll probably remember when I get home.
We're not going to reconvene, Tony, I just want you to know that.
Any other business? So, we'll go to public comment, because we have someone who is appealing their abatement decision. We have to go into executive session.
I will public comment.
Okay.
I would like to say, if with the election, please everyone come out and vote. And certainly, for my three-year term, if it doesn't continue, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. And I've enjoyed it.
We have been a pleasure, and I hope we.
We'll stop.
You forget.
But please vote, that's how it works. Be nice to get more than one. Let's just have a nice large showdown.
That's right, everybody come out and vote. It's your time to have a voice in the town.
Committee updates, is that?
Yes, well, we didn't go to public comment.
Is that what you forgot?
Can we do committee updates before public comment?
Usually, yeah.
Okay, committee updates. Tony, Arbor Board.
Arbor Board, we changed the meeting date, it'll be August fourteenth, a Monday, as opposed to the Thursday. So, someone has another high doctor appointment.
I mean, it seems to me you're changing Arbor Board to Mondays, maybe you should do Mondays.
I exactly blew the thinking off.
Joanne?
Down East DMS, we are meeting at the last Monday in September. But we are doing really well financially, and we are thinking about buying another ambulance.
Wow, excellent, excellent.
They're really doing well.
Perfect. Rachel? Recycle meeting will be August the eleventh, Friday afternoon at four o'clock. And we hope to welcome our new member, Larry Lebec.
Dan?
Quadi TV, our next meeting is August twenty-third at four o'clock. And the revolving loan, as once again I mentioned, that is an opportunity for any businessperson in town to go onto our website or come into Town Hall and find out about that. That is August seventh, is a Monday at three o'clock.
Shellfish, our next Shellfish committee meeting is August fourteenth, Monday at six o'clock. And the next State Harbor meeting is August twenty-third at four forty-five. I'm not sure when that's going to be, because it falls under the same day that we have town meetings, so we'll schedule that.
So, if you want to join Quadi TV committee, it's a great one, because we started four, we have to get out of the way by four forty-five, so. Be sure you, it doesn't go very long.
Now it's the public comment. So, we're going to.
They go to the company.
Yes. I would like to announce that Lubec Lamarks is having an art opening this Saturday, a reception. We have two new artists, Jeanne Backhouse and Brenda Day, both local women, and it is spectacular. They just put it up today, I was down there, it is phenomenal, do come.
We need a motion to go into executive session for consultations with medical MRSA four oh five, six E, abatement appeal.